Meeting is called to a order.
Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, July 5, 2017 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, maybe calling in, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. Please rise for a moment of solemn meditation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. President, I would that we remember those in our community that are less fortunate than we are, both locally as well as globally. Ask that we remember all of those who have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers. Remember all of those that are experiencing difficulties and sufferings at a high level at this time of year when we're celebrating fun, life, and love. Many people are still having significant issues that they need support on. And so, we ask that our God and Creator give us the wisdom and the best information so that we can make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie. God calls. Pledge of Allegiance.
Meditation.
I make the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes.
Are you there?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Murzky is with us now. Approval of minutes from the City Council meeting of June 21, 2017, and bills for payment on June 29 and July 7, 2017. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski.
That's it, Rose?
Yeah. Repository sales next.
Okay. Do we have anybody here to speak about a repository sale? Are there any citizens here to speak about a repository sale? One last time. Or is there anybody here to speak about a repository sale? Hearing none? Before we go on to citizens to be heard, we have a public hearing at 9:30, and we will suspend our regular meeting while we have the public hearing portion. So, anybody calling, Rose, on speakers?
No, we have nobody listed on the agenda today.
Okay, we'll open this up now to citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens to be heard?
Good morning, Council.
Morning.
Good morning.
My name's Joseph K. Crillette. I live in Mill Glen Apartments, Mill Creek. I got my desk cleared off, and I had a nice Fourth of July as a veteran. It was great. Many veterans up there. Oops, I forgot. I forgot. I forgot. Over there, sir. All right, we're getting it while I'm here. Rose can contest and confirm and validate. There are tapes, video tapes, available to January 4 and January 18. Counsel me. I'm charging... Did you give them my paperwork, Rose?
I did.
Okay. I would like to charge the solicitor, Mr. Attorney Carly, and Mr... Who's the Vice President of Council, by the way? Oh, God bless. Mr. The Vice President, the President of Council, to convene a meeting about those January 4 to January 18 videos. Those were the videos where Councilman Kwiatowski took great time, used all his education and political savvy...
Hey, she's stepping out of line.
...to claim. These are his claim, which I want to clear it up. He said that I lied. That's... In my community, you just effed up. Excuse me. He said I lied twice on two separate council meetings. That's not going to lie. That's not going to lie, Mr. Attorney. Mr. Carly, Attorney Carly, Solicitor of the city for many years, that's not going to lie. It's all had its say. Convene the meeting.
Are there any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard?
This is all Ms.
Are there any other citizens to be heard?
No.
Okay, we're going to head on to ordinances for final passage.
Okay. We're going to move on now to ordinances for final passage, Rose?
Yep.
When you get a minute.
Council File 15994, Ordinance Number 182017, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $252,491 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Emergency Solutions Grant. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15994, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 182017, be finally passed by the City Council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 182017, finally by a 7, nay 0. Council File 15985, Ordinance Number 192017, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $641,825 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the home projects. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15995, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 192017, be finally passed by the City Council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky...
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 192017, finally by a 7, nay 0. Council File 15996, Ordinance Number 202017, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $2,791,421 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and $14,412 program income total, for a total of $2,805,833 for the 2017 projects. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15996, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 202017, be finally passed by the City Council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 202017, finally by a 7, nay 0. Council File 15997, Official Ordinance Number 212017, an ordinance amending Ordinance Number 261958, the traffic code of the city of Erie by the installation of a stop sign at one intersection at Chapin Street and Ritchie Street. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Brennan, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15997, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 212017, be finally passed by the City Council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky...
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon...
You got another member of the council.
Mr. Kwiatowski. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 212017, finally by a 7, nay 0. Ordnances for first reading. Council File Number 15998, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $45,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue received from eight Erie County Greenway Program Grant and providing for the expenditure thereof for the Rossler Park Recreation Improvement Project. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Jones, the Council File Number 15998, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky...
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski. City Council read and adopt. Council File Ordinance Number 15998 by a 7, nay 0, on first reading. That'll take us into new business, Mr. President.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would like to move the balance of the agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Do we have any separations?
The hearing, we're going to put the hearing.
Yeah, the hearing will be around 9:30, so it'll have to be a separation probably.
Do we need to separate the hearing?
It's under... Well, it's under old business, Dave. We don't have to separate that, right, Rose?
No.
Okay.
Okay. It's a separate issue.
Okay.
Bobby, anything you want to separate?
No, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, hearing none. Vote on the balance.
All right, moving the balance of the agenda. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky... Mr. Murzky?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Witherspoon, or Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski. That'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Okay. Bob, do you want to start first, or...
No report today. I'll be back next meeting, and you guys, I hope you everyone had a happy and safe Fourth of July. Thank you.
Hey, Bob, I'm going to give you a call. We got an issue you and I got to talk about.
All right, Tom, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with Mrs. Arrington today.
Hi, everybody. I hope everybody had a nice Fourth of July. I did with my family, but I would like for everyone to keep my family in prayers. The two Tate young men that were just shot within a week and a half of each other were my first cousins, so my family is going through something. You know, it's really kind of hard to really enjoy the Fourth, but we were all around family, so it was a nice day. Senseless violence in our community has to stop. You know, for no good reason are young men being gunned down. And for somebody who's been there, you know, lost my son seven and a half years ago, it just brings me back to it happening to my own son yesterday. And these are my cousins. I couldn't even go to the funeral. You know, I went to the awake, I paid my respects at my family house, but I can't do funerals anymore. You know, I've been... For seven and a half years, I've been going to the visuals that the sisters do. I can't even do that anymore because mentally, I'm at a meltdown point. It has to stop. We have to come together. You know, it seemed like we all in our own separate corners, but we have to come together. We have to come together. You know, we say that these young men and young women out here are our future leaders. The way I see it right now, we're not going to have any minority young men as future leaders. And the saddest part about all of it is the children that they are leaving behind. The children. It's sad. My cousin David, the latest one, he just left two kids behind. You know, my granddaughter at the time, when my son was killed, she was 10 months. Now she's eight years old. She's asking questions. What do you tell a grandchild when they start asking questions like that? So, please continue to pray for my family, for the Erie community, and pray that all this violence stops. We need to bring the love, hope, and peace back to our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this morning.
I thank you so very much, Councilman Jones. We're going to skip Winarsky, and we're going to go over to Councilman Brennan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
There's a couple things that this past couple weeks, I attended the Erie Downtown Partnerships Board meeting this past week. They had a visit from the Erie... I'm sorry, the Pennsylvania Downtown Center this past week to review a lot of their activities. They met with each of the committees to kind of just talk about what their priorities were and what the goals are. Also, there is a Erie Downtown Partnership Design Review Committee that occurred, and they're reviewing the facade applications that they've received. So, hopefully we'll be hearing who gets the grants and see that happen soon. I also attended the Little Italy Grant Review Committee. They reviewed facade grants, applications, and in the past, they've had a focus throughout their neighborhood, but they're trying to focus in certain streets to locate that facade grant money. They looked at window replacement, signage, porch repairs, et cetera, for some of the grant applications. And also, Little Italy and also some other groups, Sister St. Joseph Neighborhood Network, they're sponsoring a design competition for a bus stop at 18th and State. They want to incorporate green design technology into this bus stop. The applications and submissions are due on July 31, so if there's any artists or designers out there, look for that. It's coming up pretty soon. And just last item is I attended the Erie Zoo's fundraiser, along with several other council members. It was a great turnout, and they had a lot of success, and I just want to note that they do a lot with the money they receive at the zoo. With limited funding, they're able to really do a lot and spread that out to really keep the zoo in great shape. That's it for my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. President. Very brief. Did attend the MTA meeting this past week. Only thing mainly brought up is their shuttle service they have going from the West Erie Plaza now to the peninsula. Convenient more for the Westsiders, but they do have lines that take you to the West Erie Plaza, they wanted everybody to know, that will, from there, take you to the peninsula free of charge. To get to the West Erie Plaza, though, there is their fee. Did attend the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new amphitheater. Awesome, awesome structure down there. The Eight Great Tuesdays are starting next week, the 11th, naturally free. Take advantage of it. Get down there, enjoy the new amphitheater as well as the bus service. They have the shuttle service from the library area, as well as the park-and-ride on 12th and Lincoln Ave. So, there's a lot of things happening in town that are free to the public and should take advantage of. Other than that, I hope everybody enjoyed their Fourth, and please enjoy the rest of the summer. Thank you.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Thank you very much. It's almost 9:30, so I'll be very brief. The Erie Housing Authority is continuing under the direction of Mr. Mike Fraley. Mr. Fraley has been with the organization for many years. He's currently the acting executive director and pending HUD's approval of the qualifications that they want a director to have. I am hopeful that Mr. Fraley in time will become the permanent executive director. He had worked under John Horan for quite some time. He knows the program, he knows the system, and he's a fair individual. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Just a quick note before we break into the public hearing... I mean, yes, the public hearing. I had the pleasure of attending the Airport Authority meeting the other day, and I see here we're going to be sending him a letter of support for the possible new air service that may be coming. Now, it doesn't sound like much with a ninth-seat or more airplane being propeller-driven, but it'll be the first flight to Pittsburgh in many years. People are still under the assumption that we can fly there, and we can't. So, this airline possibly could expand service to other Pennsylvania cities. Nothing is a given, so, you know, I would advise you to call the airport with your support or, you know, lend your support by calling any of the board members or any council person. And let's hope we get more air service. And it was my pleasure to attend the dedication of another Spoon Court.
Yes, sir.
Yes. And not too many men get to have their name not memorialized, so, you know, it's a good thing that you get to see this, and he's done a lot of great work. I wish we had courts like that when we were a kid, but we didn't. As Mel and I talked, and Curtis and us in the back room about how our courts had... What was it, crack smell?
Crack, crated.
Yeah. But it's a great thing, and I'm glad you're expanding your league, and it's good news for the East Side. And finally, I got some distressing news that if you've read in the paper, that we were up for $500,000 from the Commonwealth of PA through the reorganization of the Gambling Commission, and the county was to get 1.5 along with us for the land bank, which went a long way to eradicate blight in the city. That bill is now in danger of not passing due to our state senator. My contacts in Harrisburg tell me that it looks like if he votes no, it could go down. I didn't like the comments that people thought I said in the paper, which was, "We want our share." That's not what I said. We want... We want, now that they're reorganizing, we want an oversight taken care of. The city could use $500,000 to take care of capital improvements and public safety, meaning fire trucks and police cars and equipment. That's much needed, and certainly, the land bank is a huge step to this comprehensive plan that everybody talks about, and this would be a key piece of revenue that would help us. So, I'm advising everybody out there... We, councilors, already wrote a letter through Councilman Murzky and I, and with the support of my fellow council members, and I have contacted Senator Loughlin on a couple occasions. I've contacted our legislators. So, I'm asking the public and my fellow councilmen also, and I have these two numbers. You can call me at home, or I'll give them to Lori here and Rose at City Hall here. Please call Senator Loughlin and tell him if you're in support of the city getting this very needed $500,000. Please call either 453-2515 or 450-4070. That's 453-2515 or 450-4070. If we lose out, it'll be a dark day for the land bank and to help this city, which we have got zero help so far from the Gaming Commission, direct help. That's what I meant to say. Direct help. So, with that, that's all... Those are my comments, and Rose, was it time for the public hearing, or...
Yeah, we can start the public hearing.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Or do we adjourn it technically?
No, we'll adjourn after the public hearing.
Yeah, we have two more reports to get.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have a report.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. I apologize. Okay. Administration?
We're done.
I was going to come back to you because we had 9:30, so...
Yeah, you can go ahead with the public hearing.
Okay, we're going to start this public hearing. Are there any citizens to speak in favor of this? We want to hear from the person that's asking for it first. Would you like to step up? Okay.
Jan, do you need me to get some easels for you? Do you have some renderings or anything?
You know what I'll do? I can just pass these out.
Okay.
Pass it around.
It was.
I'm here to talk about the improvement to 107 Plum. There's an addition on the front going on that will house a garage, a living room and a bedroom up above it. That's basically it. We've already got the variance for the garage, so if anybody has any questions, I guess. And this is Mike Grab, the architect.
Any member of council? David?
Yes, I just had a question. The... I saw the site plan, Mike, but are there buildings adjacent to it on either side, or what's the alignment of that?
The north side is the Port Authority easement with the road on it that isn't a public road, but it is open to the public. To the east is a vacant... Two vacant lots owned by Dan and Kathy Dahlkemper. To the west is Plum Street, and behind me is a neighbor to the south. So, the addition is going on the north side, so it's impacting almost nobody.
Yeah, okay. Great, thank you.
Any other member of council?
What's their address again?
107 Plum.
Give us one minute while I pass these around.
Sure.
Okay. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Just a quick question. So, this photo, I don't know if you can see it.
Yes.
It's very beautiful, actually. This is the look you're going for?
It's going to be...
Similar?
Yes, it's going to be stone and wood and vinyl.
Okay. We got one council person yet that's got one.
It's okay.
Son, are you going to have any questions, you think, or?
No, it's, it's very nice, very nice.
Thank you.
Yep, we, we like things like that, new, new development. There are no other questions from council? Thank you, then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else to speak in favor of the project? Anybody else to speak in favor of the project? Anybody else to speak in favor of the project? Is there anybody to speak against the project? Is there anybody to speak against the project? Is there, one last time, anybody to speak against the project?
Good morning, Council President, esteemed members of council. My name is Matthew Puz, I'm the Secretary to the Planning Commission, and I'm here to read the recommendation regarding this project. The City of Erie Planning Commission at the regular meeting, excuse me, on May 16, 2017, reviewed an application by Janet Ferguson for a three-story addition to 107 Plum Street, the property is located in the WR Waterfront Residential District. Since all changes in use or conditional uses in this district, the proposal shall be presented to the governing body for their approval. After reviewing the application, the Planning Commission unanimously recommends that council approve the addition to the one-family dwelling. The commission believes that the addition should be granted a building permit on the grounds that, one, all zoning requirements have been addressed, two, this is an appropriate use for this property. The City of Erie Design Review Committee at the regular meeting on May 3, 2017, voted 5 to 0 to approve the design of the addition, respectfully submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Puz.
Any questions?
Mr. Puz?
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just a quick question, so, right now, and it has to come in front of us because it's waterfront conditional, what, what is unusual about? Nothing.
Nothing. It's, the addition's greater than 20% of the original footprint, and by the ordinance, must be presented to council.
So there's no variances or anything like that?
A variance was received for the garage facing Plum Street. The ordinance states that any garage shall be set back at least 20 feet. The zoning hearing board granted it because there's no other way to orient a garage on the property, yes.
Okay. All right, yeah, I just, I was in hearing, I thought there was a variance connected to this in some way, so I just, just want to do my, ask the right question, I guess, so. All right, thank you very much.
Any other questions from council? Thank you, Matt, and thank you very much for your faith in downtown Erie and the City of Erie.
I want those phone numbers again, please.
Your phone number, sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you're hanging around after, I'll get it for you.
Where?
Rose, does that take care of the hearing for now?
That'll take care of the public hearing.
Okay, that, that ends the public hearing for today, and do I have a mo?
Mr. President?
Yes.
A move that we adjourn the meeting?
Do you have a second?
Mr. President, before we adjourn, on my way up, I met the mayor in the elevator, and I wish him the best of health. He came today to work, he's barely moving, he's in, he's in a lot of pain, so I wish him the best, and that he take care of that issue that he has. I've been there, so I know what he's going through.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. And with that, we adjourn this meeting.
City Council ends at 9:40. Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.